How about yourself?
I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to do a roll call attendance tonight, but I don't think we have any board members on Zoom. Do we have anyone on Zoom? Oh, Kelty's on Zoom, okay.
So I'll do roll call while Kelty's coming in then. So Kristin.
Here.
David G.
Here.
Annie.
Here.
Tyler told us he wouldn't be here tonight. Christine.
Here.
Oh, there she is. Kathy.
Here.
Patty.
Here.
Rebecca.
Here.
Betty is not here tonight. Sean is not here yet. Kelty.
Here.
Oh, we didn't hear you, Kelty. You should try again.
I think you're muted, Kelty.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Okay, I also. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Wish I could be there, but I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you, Kelty. David T. Here. Esme.
Here.
And Eric.
Here.
Thank you, guys. So votes tonight, because we do have someone online, will be roll called, just so everyone knows.
So good evening. And thank you all for coming. Before we get started, I just want to remind everyone about our agreed upon core values. Those are integrity, perseverance, family, respect, collaboration, and trust. These values support our mission of being a caring school community dedicated to excellence. They also support our vision of being safe, dynamic learning communities where people of all ages will think, aspire, and participate as responsible citizens in an ever-changing global society. This is a budget meeting tonight, and it's held in both in-person and virtually through Zoom. And this is in compliance with RSU 38 policy, BED, Remote Participation in School Board Meetings. This meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on the maranacook.org YouTube channel. So as far as citizen comments and public participation, and again, in accordance with our policy, BEDH, Public Participation at School Board Meetings, the following guidelines will be followed. For those attending by Zoom, you will notice the microphones will be muted, except during the identified portions of public comment at the meeting, which is number five tonight. If you're viewing on Zoom and would like to speak during the public comment time, please use the chat feature to notify Diane McGregor, and she will communicate with me that you want some, you would like to say something. In-person speakers, please sign up on the sheet. There's a clipboard by the door. If you'd please sign up there and please put the town that you're from. Also, speakers, please, all speakers, please identify yourself with first and last name and the town you live in. Priority will be given to individuals who are residents of our town. If time permits, once all residents have had a chance to speak, the board will permit non-resident comments. We ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes, and if someone who has a similar view of yours speaks ahead of you, please reference their comment rather than repeating the same ideas again. All citizen comments should be directed to the board chair. We do want to hear from all of our stakeholders, and we ask that you be respectful with your constructive comments. I would also like to clarify how we address concerns of the public. In accordance with RSU 38 policy BEDH, we welcome all respectful comments and concerns, and we ask that you not use any derogatory language or use names or identifying comments about personnel or students. We cannot discuss specific personnel matters in the public setting, but we can listen to broad concerns that folks may have. All speakers are to address the chair and direct questions or comments to a particular board member only with approval of the chair. The board will hear and record comments and questions, but will not debate matters at this meeting. Board members' questions must also be addressed through the board, through the chair. Following the meeting, we'll take time to research and gather information on any questions that have come up. And at the next board meeting, or maybe prior to that with a phone call, we will follow up with the information that you've asked for. The public is always welcome to submit written comments on school and educational matters to the board or to the superintendent. So first, on our agenda tonight, are there any additions or adjustments to the agenda by the board or the superintendent?
I don't.
Any additions? No? Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our March 8 meeting? Oh. Sorry. March, sorry. March 15th already.
I hope that we approve the minutes of March 15, 2023.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll take a vote.
Kristin. Oh, she's on the other side.
Yes.
David G.
Yes.
Annie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Kelty.
Yes.
David T.
Yes.
Eric.
I'm standing.
And Esme.
Yes.
Thank you. Animus at the board level, one of the mentioned.
And you abstained because you were not here? Okay, thank you. Okay. Second on the action items is consideration of the table motion regarding the 2023-24 school calendar. Do I have a motion?
I move that we consider table motion regarding 2023 and the 2024 school calendar. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded that we reconsider the school calendar? Is there any discussion?
So just real quick, there is an error when you look at the memo from me on option number two. It would be Saturday in the second line, Saturday, June 8, not May 8. I'm sure the soon-to-be seniors would love that, but it's actually going to be June 8 if we go with that option. And just as a reminder, because it's a table motion, you guys may, and I'm just saying this, you guys do what you want, you may want to vote and then reconsider the options voted. I hate to say it this way, but voted down, and then make another motion based on the options that are there. So it's up to you guys, though. I just, you know, if you want to think, so to speak, that might be the best way to do it, rather than amending the motion.
So I think what you're saying is that the motion that's on the table right now is the one from the last meeting to approve the calendar that was presented to us at the last meeting. So that's the motion on the floor right now. So we need to vote on that one first, and then we can make a, we can have more discussion and make a motion for one of these options or not. Any questions or discussion on the original? So a week? Two weeks ago. Patty?
So you're saying we have to vote on that motion, even if we reject it, so that we could talk about the new stuff? Okay, then I move that we, well, do we just?
It's already been moved.
Oh, we just need to vote?
Yeah, right. We just need to vote, unless there are other questions. Okay, so.
All right, so everyone's good? Okay, so Kristin here first.
I'm trying to make sure everybody knows what we're voting on.
Yes.
So. So what we're voting on is if you're in favor of the calendar that was presented to us two weeks ago, that we tabled.
Option A.
Which is option A here, yes.
I'll say, Chris. Kristin.
No.
David G.
No.
Annie.
No.
Hi, excuse me. Christine.
No.
Kathy.
No.
Patty.
No.
Rebecca.
No.
Sean.
No.
Kelty.
No.
David T.
No.
Esme.
No.
And Eric.
No.
All right, so that's unanimous, so if you want to reconsider.
Okay, so now we need to look at the options that we have, and is there a motion for any one of these?
I move that we approve option B. Second.
Any discussion?
And now it's option B.
Option C.
Sorry, thank you.
But it's option C. It's not on my sheet right here in front of me. I don't, actually.
So I do have a question about option C. So option C is adding 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 early release days to the calendar. That could be used as.
Makeup days. So that way, we still have two storm days, but then we have built-in makeup days, because two workshop day, or excuse me, early release days can be turned into one makeup day. So, and that's why I put them more, the one I put in October, I believe it was, and then the other four, I made a point to put them in February, March, April, and May, just so that we have that.
So I just want to make sure I understand this. If we had to use it for a makeup day, it would be one day, would they, the kids would stay for the full day? So one day would count for two days?
We would have to have two early release afternoons to make up one day, right?
Got it. The other question that I had about this is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. That makes 10 early release days. My concern is how does this impact CATC?
I actually checked with Augusta, and what I did is I aligned, they have actually more early release days than we do, and maybe I shouldn't be saying that too much out loud, but what I did is I aligned with their days, because they're doing every second and fourth Wednesday. So I aligned with them, so it won't impact our CATC students.
So if we didn't have early release days on those days, they would not be going to CATC?
Right, exactly. They wouldn't be going anyway, right? Yes, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't impacting them in 10, on 10 different days. That's a lot.
Yeah.
David?
And C is, would have graduation at the center?
Yes, at the civic center, yeah.
And just, we had a lot of comment about effect on the parents and the families and the students. And my initial question is that anything we do is going to have, you know, whether we make people stay extra during the summer, is going to affect families, at least it's going to affect families. It was good to see the vote gives us some idea of general. But it's, can we say that this since it's advanced notice and so forth, it will hopefully affect everybody as best possible or as soon as possible?
Well, and I think it helps, like, it's a lot easier for families if they find out their students are staying in school versus finding out that, oh, they're coming home early. That does impact families quite a bit. So changing those early release days to a full day has much more, I should say, has minimal impact on family because their high school and middle school students are staying, and their elementary school students are staying. So like we, there was comments about the high school or middle schooler sometimes babysitting the younger siblings. So like, the whole family unit would be together with this plan versus doing what we had to do last time, which was the extra hours just for the middle school and high school, because, yeah, so.
Yeah. I mean, I struggle with this. I mean, we're doubling the amount of half-days. It's not like childcare is accessible in this area. I mean, the childcare that is available is pretty expensive, actually. In Augusta, there's cheaper childcare options than there is in the Reed Field area. I just think this is a burden, and I think that we're, you know, it's tough to have graduation in the gym, but we're really upsetting the apple cart for a lot of people, for a small minority. And I hope we keep that in mind as we make other decisions.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Kristin.
How many kids are in the class that this would be affecting their graduation?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. It's 80-something, I believe, but don't quote me on that.
What is the limit in the gym? How many?
So that's going to equate to roughly four to five tickets per student to give to their family members. Sean, I don't know if you know what the seating capacity is off the top of your head. Yep.
I don't know right off the back of my head, but I do have it in my office, that number, and I can get that to you. But five, I think, is more than one. I'm pretty sure it's like four, if I remember correctly. Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll get that information from Sean and share it with the board, though, for sure, what the seating capacity is, so that it's.
Rebecca?
So I'm having a little trouble understanding the early release days in option C. It's the same date as option A, but there's no release, early release days in option A. So what, what, can you just explain what the difference is?
So by adding those early release days, I can then use those days as our makeup days if we need them, because there are those I can use. By keeping the students all day, I get three hours extra, which can then be applied to any storm day total. So I'm not having to jump around. I can just say these two half-days are going to turn into full days automatically.
But there's no requirement, I mean, we can just make it a half-day?
No, if we have a scheduled half-day, the state will allow us to, that half-day counts as a full day. But then by staying longer, which is not, which is an early release, flipping that to we're going to stay all day, then that gives us three hours for a makeup day. We have to have a five hour, we have to make up five hours. If we just pull it to a full day, we'll make up three hours. So in my mind, two half-days can be flipped to make up one day of a storm day or emergency day if we have to use it.
Okay, and what was option A? What was the difference there?
The only difference is those extra early release days are not there.
Be in the same boat we are.
Right, you still have to find a way to make up those days. It can be more difficult to schedule depending on.
What I was trying to do with that option was building something that we could then access.
Patty?
Um, the thing about the high school, middle school students who may be taking care of younger students may or may not be fixed with this because it happened because something happened just to the middle and high school.
Right.
So like, if that happened again, then it wouldn't, this would not fix it.
Right.
And then the other thing I wonder is whether it's through the A-team or some other way, have administrators and through administrator staff and all of them in on what they think. I see this survey about parents and students of current junior, current juniors, but I'm wondering what's, we heard from that parent last time about how that was a, the current, what's happening right now is a concern with childcare. And I've heard from a number of staff people about making up an hour a day doesn't feel like it's a great educationally sound option. And I just wonder what staff and feel about this option C. Do we know anything about that?
I didn't survey the entire staff, but that's what.
Did it come through a conversation at A-team, or did anybody ever get to weigh in on it?
Yeah, like, we talked about it at A-team, but I don't, I'm going to be honest, I can't speak for the principals if they had conversations at their school. I just don't know that.
Okay, thanks.
Christine?
I like the option of having extra time for professional development. I think that that's needed too. On, so I'd like that addition to option C.
So anyone else? So I just want to say something. I appreciate the fact that we did put a survey out to the juniors and to their parents, but looking at this survey, to me, it is not statistically significant because of the numbers of people that responded. I mean, I don't think we can, I mean, it's good information, but I don't think that we can look at this and say, oh, you know, this many people want to be at the civic center, 69% of the kids, that's not what this says. So I think we have to take that into consideration when we're using this as our data, because this is not statistically significant.
Do we know how many people are in the junior class?
It's around 80-ish.
Oh, is that what you just asked?
Yeah.
I also think that the, when this survey, the questions of the survey, it doesn't give like, well, this is what would happen if it's at the civic center, this is what would happen if it's at the gym, you know? It's just like, where would you like it?
No, no, the survey itself was Michelle, and she, in the introduction piece, she said option one means this. Option two means this.
Thank you for that clarification.
I just printed the results.
That's fine, that's fine.
And it was Michelle LaForge that did it, because she has direct access to the kids, so I figured that would be the best way to get it out.
88 juniors.
88.
Thank you.
Sean?
Um, so I know you had mentioned to me that there might be another option.
That option did not pan through.
Yeah, and then the question was asked to me, so I'm like, yeah. Why it can't be at the civic center later is, I think it was in an email, but so you might not have saw those emails now, is because the civic center sets up for graduations for a two-week window, and if you go outside of that two-week window, it costs you three times as much due to your graduation.
So when we had contacted the civic center, we said, well, could we move it to the following Monday? And they said, there's actually, if they were to do that, there's another event, so they have to take down everything on Sunday night after the last graduation, reset for the Monday event, and then the Monday night, they would have to reset again for us, and that's where the extra cost comes in, so like Sean had said.
And I have a follow-up, but if someone else has a question?
Go ahead.
Okay. There's no way to, I mean, I did it at UMF, and there was way more than 80 kids. Either you are outside, if it rained, you went inside, and there's no way, there's no way to do that.
It, when you look, like, we'd have to, like, use a parking lot or the field, the, my concern with the field is those bleachers aren't going to, they're going to hold less than what's in the gym. So it would just, and then we need a sound system down there. We need all the, you know, to be able to make it a nice graduation. There are things we're going to have to get in order to pull that off.
Right, but we're running the civic center. That's not cheap, but.
No, no, it's another, we did talk about, could we use an outdoor?
I think you get where I'm coming from. I'm just stuck up on, we're making a huge decision and affecting a huge amount of the student population and families for over, I don't want to say it's not significant, because it's hugely significant, over one-day graduation. It has a huge effect on our students and our, there's a lot of divide right now amongst teachers and families. Just talk to them if you have it.
David?
I don't think I've ever, anybody ever asked this question, but what does it cost to be at the civic center?
At the civic center, it costs about $5,000, a little over $5,000.
Okay, thank you.
And then that's what we would pay for the, a lot of that would be, it's basically a wash if we take our custodial crew and ask them to do the setup and take down. It's going to cost us about $5,000 more. The difference is civic center, like, we're not going to be able to livestream like the civic center and that, the other. It's going to be, there's no way we can do that. So, you know, it's just something to think about. When your child walks across, then at the civic center, they have two big screens on each side of the stage, and it's your child up there, like, that's very meaningful to parents. You can ask around, people that have gone to the one in the gym, and it's, there's just, there's no space. It's a small space for that amount of people. And I've heard parents that have said, I didn't even get to see my kiddo because people in front of me were standing up, or where I was seated, I just saw, like, the side of them walk. I mean, there's, you know, that's a one-shot special day. That's kind of the way I look at that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I just want to say one more thing. I do have a concern about all of these early release days, and I'm wondering why, if maybe we could take the October 25 one out? I'm just, I mean, I just feel like, I mean, I, I'm agreeing with what Sean's saying about childcare, but I also, it just concerns me, I mean, what, what is going to happen on those early release days if we don't have to use them for emergency days? I mean, it just, I don't know, it just doesn't feel like. The other thing is, I've been to graduation at the gym up here, and I've been to graduation at the civic center, and the civic center was wonderful, but the gym felt much more homey, much more like Maranacook. The civic center felt like was so big and so many people, and just, it just didn't feel like it felt when I went to the graduation in the gym at Maranacook. Annie?
Well, I was going to say something similar just about if we have to cut down on the number of early release days, but then talking it out, it seems like, why can't we try the gym for a year? If it really doesn't go well, we don't have to do that the year after. We'll have more experience to base our decision off of next year. It's not going to be a plot, maybe it's not. So we're not set in stone with the decision that we made for this year. And just talking more about the early release days, yeah, that's. For sure.
Anyone else?
I have one last comment. Oh, go ahead.
I just didn't understand that totally. Are you suggesting, could you, do you mind?
I'm suggesting, after hearing talk about the early release and families, childcare, revising the motion originally made, which I'm not officially revising, I'm just saying, I'm saying, I'm now thinking option B is better, just because we can try the gym for this year. If it doesn't work, great, we'll have more options next year. There's something, just having a predictable schedule is great. I don't, why don't we try it? I mean.
Does that help, Patty?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Rebecca?
I would like to make a motion that we approve option B. Well, we have to deal with the motion that's on the floor first. What was the motion? It was to do C. Oh, it was? I thought it didn't get seconded. No, it did. Oh, it did, okay, sorry, my bad, I'm sorry.
Sean?
Can I make an amendment to option C? Amend the motion?
You can. Who made them? Can you remind me who made the motion?
I did.
So you can either, and who seconded it? Okay, so you can amend it, or she can rescind it.
I would like to rescind. Do it that way?
Sure.
I'm rescinding my motion to.
We have to vote on?
Christine just has to be okay with it.
Is that okay, Christine, with you?
Yeah.
Okay, we're off that motion now. Sean?
I'm still on option C with an amendment to remove the, you say October 25 half-day, with, we need to form a committee to report back to the board next year with an option to use the football field. And, well, I don't need to limit them, but.
Right.
Some of those type of options. Because I don't, I'm not happy with it, as you can tell, but I don't want to upset the apple cart of people who may already be planning, you know? People do plan way out, like, I'm going to Florida next year to Disney for a graduation, like, already planning on that. So what I'm saying is take that out with a require, people report back, with a report back to the board with how much would it cost to rent chairs? How much would it cost to rent screens? How, I mean, we know there's a $5,000 budget. So with some type of report back to the full board with maybe a participating from two board members, a traditional board committee makeup. I don't need to dictate who's on it. We have traditional committee makeup. So that's what I would like to propose.
Okay, I'm just trying to see.
Take out October 25.
I got what you said. Okay, so take out October 25.
With a committee form.
So keep it at the civic center?
Yeah.
For this year?
Yeah.
Take out October 25, and then form a committee to study?
Study options, and come back with real options.
For 2025.
Yeah, with, like, the football field would cost A. A big screen in the gym would cost B. Like, I just won't want it to come back. I want it on the record, like, oh, none of these options work because we hated them. No, I want real options, because that's all.
So that was a motion?
Yeah.
Is there, is there a second? Okay, so it's moved and seconded. David? So the motion is to go with option C, which is graduation at the civic center on June 4, and have an additional four early release dates, February 7, March 6, April 3, May 22. In addition to that, form a committee.
In addition to that, form a committee to study options for twenty-twenty-five graduation.
Yes, that's my intent.
Any discussion?
I'm having a hard time with that.
Yes, it's been seconded.
Okay. I just think, I think graduation is very important. Don't, I don't want to take anything away from that, but I also think leaving so many unknown, like, how much uproar there was about just adding the day. You know, early release days, just, they still leave a lot of unknowns. And also, you know, I feel like we're, these are kind of hard times right now. Um, financially for families, so having so many early release days is going to put an extra burden on families as far as childcare. And I just don't know if families are really gonna love those early release days, so.
Just wanna make sure that even with two. Are we still gonna read that if we have two snow days built in and then this would, taking October twenty-fifth out would give us two more days, so that's four days made up, so.
Right.
One, right.
Well, we're, don't remember, you're not adding them at the end, you would be eliminating early release days, like, let's say you're early.
But you'd still have those other two. But those early release days, we'd only do two.
Right.
So you're still.
Yeah. Well, I could squeeze in three if you do like these two. These two, and then these two, there might be one left.
So the ones that were already there.
Exactly.
Could all sort of, okay, sorry, that, I didn't understand that.
The burden on families, my impression is, and can be corrected, that no matter what we do, there's gonna be a burden if they have their summer plans and we have to add three or four days at the end of the year, which we can do if we're doing it in the gym. Uh, there's three or four days that we're gonna have some people that will be here, because I know I would go on my plan, they can should do it. Uh, if there's the early release. Uh, to me, it's a little bit better because in this case, whichever we use, it's planned ahead. So beginning of the year, people can see this is something I need to be ready for. Uh, but it's still gonna cost them in childcare and so forth. Uh, so the snow days make us all adjust each time, uh, but I'm open to whatever, or we're best for families, we still meet the needs of the.
Patty? Um, I, I guess I'm, I like the, I like a lot of what, I like taking out the October day, although I do think that the professional days can be super helpful. But I think that it's a huge burden on families, but I think we're just speculating so much. I don't feel comfortable with any of it again. And I don't know if anybody else feels like this, but I feel like I don't feel comfortable making this decision that affects every student and family. And, um, without getting more, and every staff person without getting more input or information, because I mean, we're locked into, are we, we are, if, am I understanding correctly, we are locked into the civic center for twenty-twenty-four right now, correct?
For this?
No, just for this year. For twenty-twenty-three.
I know it's about that, but I thought we were locked in because we were this year and we had to already say something about it.
We only sign up when, after graduation, then, then we sign up for next year.
Is it possible, I don't know if anybody else wants this but me, but I would like to have time to get more information from people who are gonna be, I feel terrible that we did the hour thing and a lot of people feel terrible about it. And we didn't get all information from many constituents before making that decision. And so I am reluctant to support any of these without getting more information, just saying.
Rebecca?
Uh, I am still for option B, so I just wanted to say that I'll be voting against this.
That's it. David?
Um, I appreciate information and we need to listen to it and look at it as much as possible, but also sometimes studying something can become an action in itself that just goes on and on. And so I think, I think the response for a survey, this is actually a pretty response rate. Uh, not saying that we need to pay full attention to this, or it's not, you know, ninety percent for or against, but as we've looked at all the surveys we take, we're not gonna get the most things, a huge amount, we're gonna have people that will not be responding. We need to listen to those we can, evaluate it as best we can and take into consideration all these things, but if we're gonna put it off, again, we've got other things that need to be planned around this. I'm sort of, any of the options can work. Uh, so I'm going, you know, I'm not strong with pushing any of them, just, I am not pleased with putting it off some more.
I feel, I totally hear that and I respectfully disagree, only because I think that this is great information, but it's not, I would like, we don't have any information to look at yet from staff or faculty. I mean, staff and administrative staff. Um, you know, so we do have this and that's great, and I agree about time when you can go forever looking and have anything that we're looking at from.
So Jay, did you run this by the, um, association? So we did run this by the association, so we do have that information.
I didn't know that.
And for any time, any year that we've ever done a calendar, that's what we do. We run it by the association. If they agree, we go with it. So that, that's just the way it's been. The other thing that we need to take into consideration, and this isn't a huge, huge thing, but it is a little thing and I keep thinking about it. We have to have our calendar, the CATSIE, um, people by April first, because everybody has to, you know, they have to make sure all the calendars, calendars match. Give us a whole lot of time to gather more information if we feel that we want to do that. Annie?
Does the possibility exist to take a couple more of the early release days and take them off since we do have other early release that all together with the two would still give us four or five days? Another option, I don't know that I'm strongly for it, I'm just thinking, because there's not gonna be any one option that's gonna work for everyone, it's just not gonna happen.
So we have two days built in and if we use all of these as, um, all the early release days, that gives us a total of six days. Four, right? Four, and then the, the emergency day.
No, five plus the emergency day.
Esme?
Uh, I'm just thinking, so adds to the early, like, or the early releases in the beginning of the year. What does, probably not a very high likely that, that those will be used for extra days. Cause you don't have snow really till December or November. So like the days in the early release in September, uh, we gotta get rid of October one, and then like even the one in November, you're not really gonna use those as. Cause you don't have major snow till, it's like December through what, March maybe that you have to worry about your extra days. So like having just having the extra days at the end of the year, probably more helpful than having the one.
Thank you. We ready to vote? Sean wanted to say something. Did you want to say something else, Sean?
Proceed.
Okay, let me just review, let me just review what we're voting on. So we're voting on option C, which is graduation at the civic center on June fourth with an additional four early release dates, February seventh, March sixth, April third and May twenty-second. And we will form a committee to study options for the twenty-twenty-five graduation. That's what we're voting on.
Ready?
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 You guys are ready?
We're ready. Okay, so, uh, starting with Kristen.
No.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
No.
Patty?
No.
Rebecca?
No.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelty?
No.
And David T?
Yes.
And one, two, three, four, five no's. We're gonna do the weighted vote. So.
I just want to hear from Eric and Esme. What would you vote if you were?
I, I'd say yes.
Yes?
No.
No. Let me see, is John, I'm gonna think, are you gonna figure out the weighted? Okay. I was gonna say I'm a little thing here, so. So because it's a tie, we have to do a weighted vote?
So our votes weighted.
Different towns have different, um,
Based on population.
weights based on the population in the town, so when we have a tie, we have to go to that method of determining the outcome.
All right, do you want me to read the board member and what the vote was? Um, so Annie was a yes. Christine was a no.
I.
So, sorry. Christine or Kristen?
Kristen.
Okay, all right. Right, yep.
Did you get Kelty?
So.
Tyler's not here.
It was five, five.
Did you get Rebecca?
Could you please restate the motion?
Really? So, all right, hold on, I gotta find it.
Oh, I didn't.
Go ahead, Donna. So Kelty, it's graduation will be at the civic center on June fourth. It will also be in addition of four early release dates, February seventh, March sixth, April third, May twenty-second, for a total of nine release days. I just added that in. These extra early release days could be turned into half makeup days. And the other part of that is to form a committee to look at options for the twenty-twenty-five graduation.
How do we do?
Well, I want to see if I match up with Donna. It looks like the no's would win on the weighted vote on my calculations.
Yeah.
Yeah, three hundred and eighty-five point three-three is the no and three hundred and eighty-four point eight-three. So it doesn't pass. Okay, so now what? So now another motion, we gotta get a calendar here, so.
Is there another motion about the calendar?
I would move option B.
I'll second that. Any discussion? So option B is graduation would be moved back to Maranica campus to be held on Saturday, June eighth. This would allow us to have five days added to the end of the school year for school closures. Any discussion?
None.
Annie?
Yes, sorry.
Just in my attempt to make everyone happy, is there a way to add one or two early release days to option B, just so that people feel like they're getting their professional development, maybe one, I don't, anything for early, early release?
There are already.
We have one, two, three, four.
We still have built in.
The regular five days.
Right, right. We just added more.
Right, I, okay, I, and I guess what I was saying was in an attempt to, if you really want the early release, adding an extra one or two. But it's just a question, we don't, I mean, I don't.
We can do whatever the board desires.
So can I just make a comment about that? Cause I said that I would like the professional development days, the addition of those, I don't feel like that's, um, necessary for me. I don't know if people think that that's necessary.
It was just for the people that really wanted the, I don't, I'm just saying, I mean, I personally don't, but I'm saying the people that wanted. But again, let's just go ahead and streamline things with option B, because we could talk on that. So let's just stick with option B.
Okay. You're all right with that. David?
Uh, I like about option B that it provides a study of how the gym will cost and work. Find out by doing uh, or in the gym or on deal somewhere.
But, but B does say that we'll be in the gym next year.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Right, so we make sure everybody understood that.
But it would give a chance.
Right. Exactly.
Says Maranica campus.
Oh, in the Maran- on the Maranica campus. Sorry, I didn't say in the gym, on the Maranica campus.
And I agree on the early release days, that was the professional development is a nice side of that, but it wasn't the reason to want them, the reason why to give us options.
You're right.
Are we ready to vote? Esme?
Um, my biggest issue for this is, um, as a family, so my family is five. And it, so that would be with like the restrictions in the gym, that means no grandparents, no aunts, uncles, no cousins, none. And I have a hard time. Cause that's like one of the biggest days ever.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote?
I wasn't until Esme talked.
I know.
Thank you for that comment.
Patty? Can we add to B or can?
I'm going to amend B to have them, it include a committee thing to look into what options could be on campus to
deal with that. And like, you know, there was a committee thing on Sean's, what Sean proposed earlier, can we just add that same committee language? I would like to propose that we do that.
So you want to amend the motion to say a committee will be formed to study the options for graduation on campus, on the Maranica campus that best meet the needs of the all constituents.
Since it was my motion, can I, um, can I speak to that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Since it was my motion, can I speak to that?
Yes.
Um, I would rather not have a committee do it. I would just want to direct, um, Jay and whoever to include that when they are planning for it next year, to take that into consideration.
Do you want to amend your amendment?
Well, that's fine. I mean, just in some way that that, no, so in some way that, how will we know that that will, that consideration will occur? Can
so, are you just, are you saying that that will just occur?
I'm sorry.
I don't know. So what is it we want to add to the, how do we want to amend the motion? I'm looking at you two.
Oh, I, I don't care about amending it. I was just trying to okay, make it amenable.
Is there a second on that amendment?
We can just let it be.
I don't know which amendment.
You're rescinding the amendment. She's rescinding the amendment.
I think, I don't really know. I'm not really understanding what just happened, but I think that it would be nice to have people, it would be nice to have some way of knowing that if there isn't a committee, that's totally fine with me. I don't, I mean, nobody needs a committee, but to know for sure that people are gonna really look into options and get input from lots of people and stuff like that.
I have a question for Dan.
I'm officially insulted. Because of that comments. I'm sorry. This has been an ongoing thing where I'm not surveying the staff, I'm not surveying the students, like enough is enough. If you don't want me here, make a motion. I'm tired of this.
Are we ready to vote on this motion as it is?
It's straight up option B.
Straight up option B. Oh, is that, that's where we're at right now. So let's vote. Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
No.
Annie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Christine? No. Kathy? Yes. Patty? Yes. Rebecca? Yeah. Sean? No. Kelsey? Yes. David T? No. Esme? No. Eric?
Yes.
We're tied again, so we'll start counting votes. Yeah, we have 11. Sorry.
So, so what was it?
Six to five, the motion passed. No, we don't, we have 11. What did we gain? I'm not trying to.
We don't have 11. We should have 10.
So it is, it was.
So it's tied again.
So let's.
Everyone said no.
Yeah.
Yep.
Kathy, yeah. Patty. Rebecca. And Kelsey. You have Dave Gilman, no. Christine, no. Don Robert, no, and Dave.
Yes, so six. So it is six. So, so the motion, that motion passed.
So the motion passed six to four. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next to the, on the agenda is citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? Okay, Leslie?
Noted on putting my city of, town of residence on the sheet for next time. I must have missed that along the way, so apologize.
Thank you.
Leslie Marco from Mount Vernon. Class of 1997. I'm not the only one in here who has graduated through the hot sweaty gym. I wanna say that I, I, I appreciate the ability to be in this room. I appreciate watching the board work hard to try to understand difficult decisions. I am thankful that there is sometimes a passionate battle about what that right decision is. I, I will say that the process sometimes feels difficult to, to follow. To understand, and please still hear this with all the appreciation, to be able to follow how we get to start, the necessity to make a decision on something, how the work gets done to try to bring something to the board, how to navigate the options, how to collect information. When, when sometimes only part of it then is, is read out, there just can be misunderstandings. I, I I stand here as a citizen being very transparent to the learning and the experience and still riddled with appreciation. I think there are options to option B that can be explored and I, sorry, I'll speak to only the chair that some board members were accurate in the theory of if we are mindful in the calendar of decisions and are thinking far enough ahead, and this is thinking a good distance ahead, that there can be some readout on the progress just of the work that's being considered, what's been found so far. There may be able to be a cadence that keeps people up to speed with work that is just ongoing, that might not be ready for a decision. And maybe that's not right, maybe that's not how it works. But I've, my husband comes from Morse High School where it has the longest standing alumni association in the country. There's a lot of traditions actually that can possibly solve some of the problems it seems like we face. You know, when we have a discussion around the Civic Center or being here back on, and to be clear, it does say campus. It doesn't necessarily mean it does have to be in the gym. There are schools that do this. We don't have to try to figure out how to do it without asking other schools how they make it work, use best practices of other districts. But there are some traditions that can be baked in that allow the kids to be involved and have some appreciation. I heard the information about what it does mean to the custodial staff or overtime in setting up what might be here. Have sophomores set up chairs. Have sophomores appreciate what's ahead of them. Juniors come to celebrate the, I don't know how it works yet for a while. It was 96 when I was a junior who stood up for the senior class who was graduating and appreciated them, and there was honor and tradition in doing some of that work. You get to prepare and you get to get excited sooner, and graduation doesn't become that which is only for one class, but it is that for school. I think there are options. I hear our young board members talking about family, and family is real too. There are so many options to stream and have an experience that can include family members. Wasn't streamed when I was here. Wasn't streamed when other folks in the room graduated through here. Those are options we have now. I stream my kids' basketball games, you know, in, in very cheap ways, you know, so I think there's options. I think there's community, you know, giving. I think there's tradition among students. I, I just think, I just think there's other options. So I, I offer some of that for consideration on this very particular topic, but also a little bit of feedback on the process, trying to understand how it's all working, because I know it's very formal, but it can be hard to follow. And I, I think plenty of good work could be done that doesn't feel like we are in an emergency situation. Hearing that we maybe need to just move forward and pass or stop talking about something is, isn't the goal. The goal is making the right decision. And that is important, and watching you guys grind it out, I really appreciate that. And have an open, honest conversation about it. I appreciate that. I appreciate being on. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. There, was that the only one on the list? Okay, on to the budget workshop.
Alrighty. Diane, do you mind just pulling up the slideshow and I'll just work from here? Nope. Yeah, that's, that's last week's. So as she's working on getting it up, I'll just, the, the first couple of slides are still the same. Remember, the goal was to balance the needs of all members of the RSU 38 school community and to promote student success in all areas while maintaining physical responsibility. What I'm gonna give you guys tonight is going to be updates from the A-Team meeting, and again, suggestions from that. Our team directives, I think they, it worth, it's worth repeating here that our initial target was to increase spending as little as possible, one to two percent. And I've said many times that that is basically an unattainable target at this point, just with the cost of inflation alone. So we recognize we started with a goal that was going to be difficult to reach. And this was also pre ED 279. So that came out in a little bit later in, you know, mid-January. So we know that we were already up against it not having that information. We are trying to increase transparency, the equity of spending practices. Instructional line spending is based on the number of students in a building with an additional allocation for Title I schools. Remember, Mount Vernon Elementary School, Wayne Elementary School, and Rebuild Elementary School are Title I schools. We tried to look at class sizes of 15, 20 students in the elementary school, 18 to 22 in the middle, and 10 or more in high school classes. We have talked about the idea for several years that positions may not automatically be filled. The, the whole idea here is we're trying to make sure this process doesn't become contentious between the towns and the district going forward. And as an administrative team, we have weekly right now Friday meetings where we are chipping away at the new requests as well as looking at this year's budgets to try to kind of be as responsible with our resources as we can, keeping in mind the goal as we go forward. So tonight, I'm gonna show you some A-Team suggestions from last Friday. We will give you a fourth draft of the warrant article summary, which is the, the, the kind of the spending budget. We will also do a second draft of our revenue, as well as a second draft of the local calculation for each, and then obviously we'll be moving on to a discussion from there. So looking at our suggestions for next, that came from this past meeting. So when, I'm gonna actually start on the items that are still, at this point, have remained in the budget and circle back to the ones that we talked about removing. The nurse position was one early on that we had decided to keep with the cost of about $43,000. Our ELL person, we were looking to make that person full-time. They are .9. We would want to increase them by .1, and $6,900 would do that for us. In Wayne, room renovations had originally came in at 8,000 and working some magic that we were able to get those down to about $1,500. The change in the ed techs. Excuse me. The, I'm starting the new ones now. Sorry, I apologize. So we had a discussion about the extra position at the middle school. The middle school, because of numbers rising last year, took their math interventionist position and turned it into a team position. And they asked an ed tech to pick up math intervention services, which they were able to do because they're an ed tech three. So we were able to do that. So what the middle school, we had a long conversation as a team. So rather than ask for another team teacher, they would basically keep everything as is, and they would like to add in an extra specifically math ed tech. So we reduced it down from 75,000 to reflect that 45,000 for that request. There has already started to be conversation between Mr. Seroy and Mrs. La Forge about the possibility of sharing that person because we are one campus and actually doing a little bit of sharing and having the high school interventionist holder see some of what is going on with those ed techs as a way to make connection going forward as well. So the team is recommending the change from a, a full-time teacher to an ed tech, and the cost is 45,000. So we're saving about $30,000 by reducing it to an ed tech. The, we had a long conversation about the elementary principal, extra elementary position. This is the one that currently is at Wayne, but again, has ramifications. If there's a change at Mount Vernon as well, the team agreed that this is kind of an integral position for a lot of different reasons. One of them meaning that when the principal is there for support, their, their teachers feel better about having that person in the school, and it therefore support. So I'll just kind of say it generally in that way. And then we talked about the guidance position. We had an extra elementary guidance position, and again, based on student needs at this time, the administrative team also agreed that this is probably going to be an important position to keep moving forward as well. So on the other side, the the, the change to the middle school, the one that we discussed as a middle, as a, as a A-Team was the SRO. So I wanted to said clearly and kind of for the record that everyone agrees that an SRO is probably important. Not probably is important, but now may not be the time to try to do that, to add in a brand new position like that. The suggestion was, again, there seemed to be a lot of questions about how we use the SRO. So maybe this is an opportunity to say, we're not gonna build it in this year, but we will start laying more groundwork for it for the following year's budget as a way to, to bring that forward. Just because, again, in concept, it sounds like a great idea, but otherwise, it does look to be a little bit difficult. You know, to say to people, we're gonna cut ed techs, but we're gonna bring in an SRO. You know, that, that just felt a little bit not good, I guess is the word that we'd use there. So having said all of that to you, I'll share this with you in just a moment. Diane, if you can go on to the next screen. We still have work to do. So we, this coming Friday, we will be covering all of these topics with the board, with the A-Team and looking at the budget. So we have a, we still have a little bit to go here, and you'll notice at the bottom I put board directives because we're at a point right now where the clock is starting to tick. So I'm going to need directives on what numbers are you guys looking to hit? Or if you wanna tell me you're good where you are, that's fine too, but I need to know if there's anything, any changes that you guys want to see. So all of those suggestions I've given up to this point, I really need to know, are those going to stand? Or do you guys want changes there as well? So what we're gonna do next, and if Diane, you can go to the next slide. What we're gonna do next is we'll start passing out the numbers so that you guys can take a look at those numbers, and then we can go from there as far as that goes. So we're gonna pass around the warrant article budget summary. I don't know, I'll give a chance for those to come around. Then I'll walk you through the numbers, and then I'll open it up to discussion at this point. So when you're looking at the first page again, again, this is your warrant article budget summary. And again, I know everyone goes to the bottom line to see, so with the suggested cuts that we have, right now, we're at a little over $1.5 million increase, which translates to a 7.86. I don't have my glasses, so I'm looking at 8.6. That's kind of where we are right now. And if you look at the, if you compare them week to week, you'll notice that the percentages in those cost centers coincide with what I told you, like the SR, I'm gonna use the SRO. That actually goes to facilities. So when you're. So when you're looking at that, you'll notice that there's a drop in the facility side of the budget there, the operation plant. That's Article Ten, I guess, right, Article?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Article Ten. So you'll notice that one dropped. So that one had been one of our highest ones, and again, because of the SRO, that's where they get tagged. So that number's dropped as you're looking at that going forward. So, you know, you can compare how we're doing in terms of budget cuts. If you go to the second page, which is the revenue sheet, this is the monies that are coming in. There's only been a couple of very simple changes. So when you look at the state national teacher funding, so that has gone up by three thousand dollars to nine thousand, because again, that's kind of good news. We have another teacher that achieved that certification. We get money from the state directly for that. And then the additional local dollars down at the bottom is the third one from the bottom. That reflects the roughly hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar cuts that we made. So that's, that's basically the two changes from first draft to second draft. And then if you look at the third page, and again, I noticed a lot of information, so I fully expect discussion to follow. When you're looking at that, one of the things I want to draw your attention to is that middle line. That's the, it's in kind of bold print and it said there amount required by the state of Maine, like that will not change. So I just want to point that out to people. That's the change in the mill rate, we don't have any control over that. So when you look at that, you can see what the towns are being hit with on something we don't even control at this point. So I just want to keep emphasizing that to, to people as we go forward. And then, of course, we adjusted based on that number that you saw on the revenue sheet at the very bottom, the, the one point five million. So if you go down to, I hope I'm counting right again, one, two. Third, is it the third line from the bottom? You'll see how it breaks down across the towns and what their percentage increase for that is for the, for the increase. And then you can see what they're totaled, the one, two, three, fourth lineup is kind of what the towns are looking at individually for percentage increase. So again, we've got a low of, we've got one town at twelve point three nine. We've got another town at thirteen point seven seven, followed by thirteen point nine four, and then the last town at fourteen point seven six. That translates to a total increase of our overall budget at thirteen point six eight at this point. So, and again, like I mentioned, we still have a few more things we're going to take a look at. But at this point, I kind of need to know from the board, as you guys go through your discussion, what number is going to be palatable for you guys to bring forward to the towns? So that we can kind of do this final push. Yeah, I blew everyone away with that.
So I have a question about the number. That's seems, and, and maybe this is the way that it's done, but that seems kind of arbitrary to me, like I really like the discussion about the mission and the positions and, and looking at what we further cut. That's it, just. So, so how is it done? Is it like a number that we have to get to?
That's what you guys are telling me, yeah, that's what you guys are telling me. That's, that's what makes this process so difficult because you do, I mean, at some point, it is going to come down to a number. And yes, I want to talk about the position and what they do for students and stuff, but it's also what can you, what do you guys feel comfortable bringing forward to the town? The town's going to see a number, when they have a vote, they're going to see a number. So they're not going to have all the context behind everything that's going on, which is the challenge.
So, and so to be responsible, oh, I know it's not a back and forth, sorry, Sean, go ahead.
Oh, no, no.
Go ahead, Christine.
I don't want to interrupt you, Tom.
Well, I, I just, in order to be the most responsible board member I can be, I want to be able to communicate to any person who might ask me, this is why the number, this is why I was okay with this number. So just so that I would understand that, for today, I would be saying that I was okay, now I understand the state required amount, that's a significant chunk for every single town, it's seven point two nine percent. So in addition to what the state is requiring, does an increase, we've got seven point two nine percent there. Then we're going with an additional. So, so sorry, just, just to be, so, so what, okay.
Seven point two nine is not a percentage, it's a mill.
It's a mill, okay, right, and that, that's the mill rate that was set by, okay, so that's set by the state and, right, okay.
In order to meet the fifty-five percent.
Right, for the EPS.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, twenty-five percent.
Yeah, for the state to meet their fifty-five percent.
Right. Okay, so, but knowing, we then have to go to our towns and say, here is additional money that we want to raise because we have prioritized these things. And right now, we're saying that the total local increase for the entire district is six point two percent of that, right? Am I right about that?
Twelve, thirteen, thirteen point eight.
So where is that?
The average, right, is that the average?
The district.
Your four.
Oh, it's right there, okay, well, I was looking at. Okay, so it says for the district, it's thirteen, yeah, I was looking at this, okay, so that's, yeah.
So if they cut this, Christine, like last year, our total, I don't remember what our, this one, I was going to say it was five.
The additional, five point two.
Yeah, something like that. So we're very far from where we were last year, yeah.
Can I just ask one more question? Does our thirteen point six eight, is that impacted at all by what the state has set as the mill rate? Or are they two?
Okay, yes, it's the two together. So that thirteen six eight is those, it's the eight point three that the state's requiring and the six point five in the middle of the page, additional local dollars. You look almost right in the middle of the page, there's six point five seventeen four three one right here. This total.
Oh, right, yeah, right in the middle.
Yes, so these two amounts together are thirteen point six eight.
Okay, so what was the mill increase last?
So the mill rate increased from seventy-one to seven point two nine.
Okay, and so we were.
That translated to roughly anywhere from three percent to six percent per town.
Okay.
And we stayed, if we, if our budget stayed status quo, we're up that much without.
And that's where all the conversation about increased facilities costs, energy, and then all of the S R funds and additional funds be expended and gone.
Right, that increase of three to six is because of the known rate. But if, even if we kept our additional local dollars the same as last year.
Right.
We're already up in our budget anywhere from three to six percent.
So a real hard sell, even with not all that much added, I mean, even with some real cuts, okay. Okay, just so as I understand. Thank you.
Oh, oh, thank you. So, well, the first thing is, there's multiple reasons why there's a thirteen percent increase. Let's be very clear. And I'm going to go back in time a little bit. Because, number one, there was a board meeting, we were sitting in this room, we were told that some of these positions were short-term, or not short-term, but were for win COVID money, we need them because students are behind because of COVID. That's number one, so that's a percentage of this increase. You can look at the minutes, those questions were asked, I've talked about it, but I'm going to talk about it again. We added a principal because of that, we added multiple positions. And I said, you got to be very careful because people are going to think those are forever positions. It's happening all over the state of Maine right now. Number two, we negotiated a teacher contract because we wanted to bring our teachers up to the salaries they deserve. We talked about that then. We add, it's going to be a big increase on the budget. Even before that, we made a decision to bond. That increases it significantly. So you add all those things, plus the mill rate, that brings you to thirteen percent. There's very few actual positions that are being added to this budget, and there's one that's being cut that I'm not going to give up on, which is the SRO. We, we have a problem, folks, you can have your heads in the sand, but we have a problem. I know kids that are not, who do not feel safe to go to school, and that is a problem to me. We can start before school started, we all know what happened to a child that went to the school. We've expelled four kids this year because of drugs and bullying and threats. I've been on the board for nine years, we have never, we expelled one kid in those whole nine years for, for a drug issue. We have, we have drugs, we have students, we have kids that aren't coming to school. That is problematic, our community wants an SRO and they're the people who pay the bill. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable to me that we are going back, we're, we're trying to make it sound like, and I'm not pointing fingers, there's multiple people trying to make it sound like those positions were forever positions. They weren't. That's for less than sixty kids, folks. Parents want the schools to stay open, they got to be willing to pay the bill. That's the reality of it. We are jeopardizing children's safety. We are by not doing an SRO. I will give, I'm going to do this right now. There was a situation, multiple situations, with two different children I know, one of them being my daughter. Mr. Seroy did the best he could to make sure it was taken care of, but he was very busy with multiple situations. In this situation, I personally feel that there should have been some ex, ex, ex-suspensions and probably law enforcement being involved. But out of my respect, I didn't go that route. And then I hear that time and time again from kids who do not feel safe to go here. Do we need a, a test? What we're doing right now, we can do all the studies we want. I don't know if an SRO is the magic answer, but I can tell everybody in this room, what we're doing right now is not working. And I will fight till the last day of the budget vote to make sure there is SRO, and there are multiple ways to do that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Sean. I'm not as committed to an SRO, but I think we need a balance, and I I was convinced by our earlier studies and discussions that, as you said, an SRO is not the magic dancer or the magic bullet or whatever, but could be a good part of things. Something I have on the other thoughts, I have not felt, there are maybe people that did or do feel that those positions were long-term. I remember the questions and I never thought they were necessarily long-term, that we were able to take them on because of the COVID relief funds. And that we would look, as we said at the time, we would look at them now and decide whether we could or would continue any of them. I appreciate the A-team and the feedback of all those others that have given us feedback on what positions would help. I appreciate, for instance, the counselor being kept and whether the principal was kept to me was an A-team and staff, teachers decision. Personally, I am not good at giving a number, I like thought that we shared before that we're considering positions, the needs, SRO, counselor, ed techs on their individual value was presented to us by Jay from the A-team and then the other feedback that's been given. I personally, just as a balance in my head, felt that if we were going to keep, for instance, the counselor, that was a balance to me for keeping the SRO in the budget too. I don't know, whatever we do with the budget, even if we did nothing and kept none of the positions and cut other things to make up for the extra heating, et cetera, insurance, et cetera, whether we would be able to convince our town residents to support the budget, but I will do what I can to support it, even if it has the SRO, the counselor and the principal in it, and the other things that our administrative team presents to us. It's going to be hard, by the way. Thank you for listening to.
Thank you, David. David?
Yeah, I've heard from the town too, and I, I know they would support an SRO. Is there any way we could see what it would just look like? You know, we're talking spread out between four towns. The SRO was what, a hundred thousand dollars? Is that what it was?
Yeah, that's what it's.
Break that down, four towns, twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm, I know that's not the right numbers and all that stuff, but what's that extra, you know? And I've heard from the towns and, and the surveys kind of said they would support something like that. I'm getting older too, and, and I agree, I've seen more expulsions and kids trying to, you know, times changed and I think right now is the time to, while the iron's hot, look at it and, and maybe not put it up, but I'd like to just see what kind of numbers difference if it was just added, so. That's my, that's what I'll say.
I have a question, and this is, I'm sorry, it's just, but under Article Ten, operation of the plant, where of course the F R L is or until the strap, is the ninety thousand from the facilities that was cut yesterday?
Yeah, no, it's not in there yet.
There'll be another ninety.
Yeah.
Percentage, okay. So it's almost, you can almost look at it now, if equal, it's almost what it's going to be if we were to add the F R O and this facility, that ninety thousand, so you can almost look at it that way.
So I just want to say, I'm not really, in, I, I don't really want to say a number. Because to me, a number, it, it's like, okay, we just got to cut this, this, this and this. I, I'm really more concerned about the needs of our students than I am a number. If we want to keep going with all of these things at all of our schools, we need all these things at all of our schools, then the towns are going to have to pay for it. I mean, that's the bottom line to me, you want it, then you pay for it. I really, I've always been, since we very first had the conversation about SRO, I've been strongly in favor of having one. As I look now at our kids' academic achievement in math and reading, I am very concerned about that right now. And when we're looking at math interventionists and literacy interventionists and teachers, we can't cut any of those positions, we need all of those positions, we need the principal at Wayne. If we have the data that, if we're, if we want to look at data that shows that those, all of those positions are improving our students' achievement, then we need to see the data. But that to me is what concerns me. I know that kids have to feel safe at school before they can even begin to think about learning. I know that through my experience and it's, it's true, research shows that. I would not want, want to say we're cutting a teacher for an SRO. If we're going to keep an SRO, I think we need to keep every person that is directly involved in helping students with their academic achievement as well. Because to me, that's really important, and as I look at some of this data, it's very concerning to me what's going on, not only in this school, but across the whole state, across the country, really. But my concern right now is for our school. So my feeling right now is I don't really. So my feeling right now is I don't really, I mean. I would be perfectly happy going with seven point eight six to the towns, because if that's, if that's. If we're gonna keep four elementary schools and two other schools, six schools running, that's what it's gonna cost us.
I agree with that. Every bit of it.
Well, Kelsey came out of nowhere. I first, I agree. Until people feel what the cost is to do it. I first agree and then a couple of follow-up things. I mean, just because you disagree. Doesn't mean you don't, you don't like what somebody's done. I wanna make that very clear. I appreciate the A team. I appreciate everybody. I do a. A lot of things that nobody knows and no one needs to know. And.
We appreciate you.
And, and so just because you disagree, I mean, no one comes here to be a rubber stamp. It's because you give up a lot of time. Or I don't anyway, to do this. And as I talked about last night at the communications meeting. I brought it up at the end. We need to be ready to sell this thing and I'm ready. I would vote tonight to pass it with the SRO in as is. And let's roll the dice. Because if people don't wanna pay the bill, then we can start showing them. What we have to cut to make it so education isn't equitable for every student, because that's what we're doing.
That's right.
That's the reality of it. And people wanna talk about, well, the minority, well, pretty much every vote we make here is for a minority. Of a group of students. Let's just be clear. When we vote to add in a math teacher so advanced kids can have math, that's for a minority group of students. When we add in a sport, that's for my, everything we vote on here is for a minority group of kids to have what they need to excel in their education. It's, we, it's the reality of it, right? And so I think people need to see what it costs to provide every child with equitable education. And already.
So that would be if we were to vote on this budget as it is right now, the seven point eight six. Um, how is that impacted by what Annie just brought up about the facilities on? Not being reflected, I'm sorry, reflected in the SRO, is it in the seven point six?
In Jay's presentation, we took out thirty thousand to change the. Middle school math teacher to an ed tech and we took out a hundred thousand to the SRO. So that's what's reflected in this budget, just to be clear. So if you're adding the SRO back in. This has to go up.
Right, right, okay. And the facilities money is, what was that question?
About ninety-six, I think, cut from facilities and that's not, yeah, I think that was just last night.
So if we did that, it would be a wash if we kept the SRO in, basically. Anything else?
What was, what?
Yeah, they just met last night, so we don't, we don't really have the, we don't have the report yet on that, so.
We're gonna have to do the painting. I would like to know what, I mean, that's a lot. I would like to know. I mean, it's important to know.
Sean, do you feel comfortable talking about? Yeah, well.
And what we.
What we had discussed last night. Uh, cutting out of the facility budget.
Oh, I didn't bring my paper.
But I don't wanna, I mean, I have what was cut, but.
I, I'll speak about some things.
Okay.
This, this whole meeting. I'm kind of. Torn, I guess, on, on some certain things. So I'm just gonna try to do this and be polite, I guess. I just, I just wanna iterate. I heard you say that if we put the SRO in for the hundred thousand, we'll put it back in, but we'll cut the ninety thousand. So it kind of washes it. Well, then I hear you guys say, well, let's just do the budget right now, the way it is. You're okay, so don't make me cut my ninety thousand. That would, I mean, let's be fair, I, right? Unless I'm looking at this wrong, but anyways. I know a lot of you guys have questioned the painting every year. Uh, what I do with the painting is. I lost so much money every year for every school. We'll start on the outside of the school. They do their five thousand dollars worth of painting, they stop. The next year, they'll start where they stop. And it goes around, it takes three to four years to get around the whole school. And then we go to the inside of the school. We do the same thing. And time we get that all done, our outside needs to be painted again and we keep going around. As you all know, if you stop one thing for a year or so, you never catch back up. So that's why I try to keep the painting in there every year. If you tell me to cut the painting. I'll cut the painting. I'll, I'll do what I have to do to keep the district, you know, going and everything smooth. Unfortunately, I don't have enough people. To just go out and paint all summer long, because we're trying to do the cleaning and some other maintenance issues too. So Sean, I'll take you up on the painting in the summer. Anybody that wants to come paint, great. I would love to have you come paint. So that, that's why I like to keep the painting in there every year, because. I will say, I've been to three facilities on some, on some seminars that I've gone to other schools. And I'm not gonna downgrade any other school, but I'm pleased with our facilities on how they look and, and how they are. So, yes, we have some very older schools, but our schools look really good. Are they perfect? Not at all. No, I mean, I just can't make them perfect. We don't have the money to make them perfect, but they are in really good shape. So on, on that, no. And then what we talked about on cutting last night. I did tech, cut out all the generator switches. That what is not a necessity. It was something that I would have liked to have had. So if we lose power, you know, if I could have gone right up, plugged it in, we don't have. Parents calling and everybody getting upset and trying to decide where we gotta put the kids, but it is not a necessity. And when it happens two or three times a year, we lose power, so I cut those. Uh, there was some office, an office that I cut out that we don't need to move this person right now. We don't have to. They're getting by the way it is. Uh. The parking lot of Reed Field, we cut out. That was a big chunk of change. Uh. They do get by. It is a pain in the bo, the way they do it, but we can get by another year. Uh, I'm trying to think of some, the other things that I cut. I'm sorry, I don't have my paper with me. Uh. No, go ahead. You can, yeah.
So, um, middle school plumbing.
Yes, uh, the Dixie plumbing in her room. Uh, that's Jackhammering the floor all up, stuff like that. Her sink is right on the outside of her room. We'll get by another year. She was able to use the sink right there. Does she want it inside the room? Yes, she does. But it's right there. That's something, and that's a pretty good cost where Jackhammering the whole floor up to run piping. Uh, so that was one that we cut.
Uh, nothing from the high school. Um, Kelly's office and the bus.
That was a bus garage.
Um, and then I just, yeah, I just have the painting, I was thinking to rotate it, which you just wanted.
Yeah.
The cameras, two cameras.
Oh, yes. And there was two, two cameras in the foyer. I talked with Norm. We're gonna do something different on that, so I don't need those.
And then the money and meaning of the classroom.
Yeah, the classroom tile and we, uh, the town office is supposed to be moving out. We were gonna tile that floor. We'll just get by with whatever's on the floor right now until. It's really hard with six schools and all the maintenance with the very little bit of money that I have. To do everything that everybody wants. And you guys know that and, but it's hard to explain that to some people. But we do the best we can.
Thank you, Sean. Any other questions or? So, does that help? We're not giving you a number. I don't know. Do, do, does, I guess I wanna hear from the board. Do we wanna give Jay a number or do we just wanna? What do we, where do we wanna go from here, David?
I would. Want to get a consensus or a straw poll of everyone, students and work. Whether they are comfortable with what was put forward by a few of us that. We want. Budget, student needs, which includes maintenance, uh, and. That. We will support it. And if that means. Yes, or all back in. Have somewhat of a consensus.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. If that means. You know, adjustments, but still. I think we, Dave, I'm just gonna speak to. I would want to find out if we have a consensus on. As you put forward, Captain, this is for the students and then Sean, but, and we will fight for it. Uh, and the towns will tell us what they want.
David? Yeah, I totally agree. You know, I don't wanna see anything cut from this. I'd even add an extra math tech. But I wanna see an SRO added to this. You know what? I don't speak for every town, but I'm willing to give up a. Two extra espressos a day and eat more ramen noodles. You know, this is for the kids and for a safe environment. Um, and that's how I feel. I, I, I'm really happy what I see here. And I don't wanna see anything cut. But. Throw a little extra. When you break it down. I think the towns can swallow that.
If we look, if we looked at the percentage of savings that that one thing would give us. It's probably less than one point, uh, point one percent. So. I mean, that, that's the, that's the way I look at it too.
I agree. I mean, what's, that's where I was going to, was we're spending so much time talking about this one item that is. Such a small, and I understand why, because it's a new position and, uh, it's not everyone's on board. But just also in the context of the larger picture for next year. Because it's gonna be this year and next year and, um, I mean, it's coming.
There are, I mean. If I was allowed, there are grant opportunities to apply for. I talked to Sarah Collins' office. About it. There are opportunities. I get people are busy, but I don't know how that works, like who's allowed. Like, that's something I wanna have as part of the conversation at some point. I mean, I've applied for a lot of grants, been successful. And if I get people are busy, I'd be willing to do it. And some of those grants are for two or three years and that can be a savings in following years. Um, some of those grants turn into more than two or three years if you play your cards right, so.
I think it's.
Not asking Jay or the A team to do more, but if some of us were willing to do more, I'm willing to do more. And, uh. Let's do it. I mean, it's a hundred grand. No, I'm not saying any of these positions need to be cut.
No.
I mean, I think there needs to be somehow a. Conversation or maybe even a straw vote added. I've seen it multiple times. I don't know how to word it, but if you could, I've seen it at the end, like, are you willing next year to do X or in the following years? And what I'm getting at is consolidation. If you knew, I mean, we can't put a number on it, but maybe you could. That's what you pay. Both Point and others to do is to help you figure that out. You knew, you know, are you open to this? And at, you can add that to the end of the question at the. There's examples out there. I've seen it happen multiple times.
I think that's.
It's like a non-binding.
Right, because I think we do need to start really looking forward.
And that needs to be a part of the communication we sell. This budget is going up. Because we. Whatever, we want, I mean, not whatever, we wanna make sure that all students have. In, in this safe environment and I. And if people say no, then they're making the choice to.
Christine, so I do not want to re-debate the SRO. Completely, but one of the things people keep saying is they're tying that to safe schools. And one of the things that I heard loud and clear, because it was raised, I think by, by Dane. Is that the research on. Actual deaths. When there is a school shooter. Is, is, there is not an effect with an SRO. Thanks for confirming that, because I thought that was right. So. I understand that there is a feeling of safety and feeling safe and being safe are two different things. Um. I. And I'm not against an SRO. I, I am against an SRO if it comes at the expense of a school principal. Hundred thousand is a hundred thousand and we can't on the one hand say this is too much of an expense. Because it's a principal and it's not what we want if it's a school resource officer. I mean, they, they have to be treated equally and I, I just. I don't know why the A team made the decision that they made with regard to cutting the SRO position and keeping the principal. But I am inclined to support what the administrative team is bringing forward. Um, maybe they also want the SRO, but just thought that of the two, that would be the thing that they would, um. Want to, to, to cut, um. So, so just, it's not about not wanting, every single person wants every kid to be safe in school. Every single person on this board everywhere. Except for, you know, I mean, everybody wants kids to be safe and to feel safe. Um, so just to make sure everybody's aware of that, um, and, uh. If we. Well, I guess that's all I have to say at this point, yeah.
So I think what Dane was saying and what I'm, I'm aware of is there's no research that proves that in a school shooting. That kids are safer with an SRO, but there's another piece of it that's not about school shootings. It's about the drugs. It's about people having somebody else to go to. It's about the relationships and all that. And, and you're right, there is, there's no research that shows. That they're safer in an active shooting situation with an SRO. I don't know. There might be that I, but I don't know of it, but I would feel a lot safer myself if there was.
So can I ask you a question as a follow-up to that? So you, and people have talked a lot about drugs in schools, which obviously is a problem and apparently is in. Increasing in, um, incidences are increasing, because people have mentioned that. How would the school resource officer deter drugs in schools? Do we think that? I mean, would they be looking for them? Do we think that kids would just be less likely to bring drugs to school because there's a school resource officer on campus? What's the thought about?
Yeah, I have my own opinion, but I don't know.
I'd love to.
I don't know that it's based in any, any research, but it's, it's based in experience.
Yeah, well, I think that experience is really important, because I've looked at so much resource, research on school resource officers and it's not conclusive. A, a lot of it is the opinion of, of people with experience, so.
And I, and I also think a lot of the research out there is not indicative of our situation here. I mean, I haven't seen anything come, I mean, there's some that's around me. But a lot of the research that I've sho, seen is from bigger cities and, you know, those kinds of places that, they're not like us, but anyway. Um.
What was your question? Your opinion on, on the, um, effect of an SRO on drugs in school?
Well, I, what I think is that the biggest piece of it is that, um. The resource officer could develop relationships with kids that are. On the fringe, they're not, they're not the kids that are connecting with their advisors. They're not the kids that are connecting with the guidance. They're not. And I know of some kids that are just exactly like that. They don't wanna be in school. They come here because they have to be, and I'm talking about kids at Mariana Co. So this is one, so building a relationship with those kids. And then hopefully that relationship would deter them. From going down a path that they probably shouldn't go down, whether it's drugs, getting in trouble with the law, whatever. That's just my opinion and my, my hope. I mean, I, you know, that's, that's what I see happening.
I appreciate you sharing it. Thanks.
David?
Thank you. Um, I really appreciated, um. What you said about. Respect and trust in the A team, because. Uh, not in terms of SRO, but just as far as the whole thing. I want them to put together, and they have been working hard to bring us our budget down and. We need that at the same time, but. Uh, to trust them to present us. With, with caring for the students. If they have evaluated it and they don't need that extra. Math interventionist or. Full-time teacher or whatever, to me, that's for them to tell us what we need. Uh, and as long as, as I think we have, we've said, okay, please tell us this and we're going to support it. Uh, you've cut a lot. We're not looking to cut a lot more, but rather to make sure that. It's gonna work. So trust in the A team. Uh. Is where I'm at.
I agree. Could you show us the, the next? Conversation you're going to have with, okay.
So I was just looking at the individual budgets of adult education, transportation, student activities, facilities and the central office.
So it would be those folks that would be included in that discussion?
Yeah.
Which I think is still important to, to have that discussion, but I'm at the point now where. I don't even wanna ask the A team to look at cutting anything else. I mean, I just feel like they've. Gone as deep as I think they need to go. I mean, there are some other areas that maybe we could look at that we haven't looked at yet. But I just think that, in my opinion, they've gone as deep as, as I would like to see them go.
It's the ready one that doesn't agree. Sean wants to say.
Sean, do you wanna say something?
Well, I wanna back up to the SRO. Well, I want to back up to the SRO. There's a reason why the Maine School Safety Center, which is informed by a, I guess we could argue about a pretty progressive legislature in 2019, recommends that every school in the state of Maine, these people are professionals from all different backgrounds. They recommend that every school in the state of Maine have an SRO. You can go, you can call them, you can meet with them independently of Maine. It's very clear in the report they put out.
Right.
That every school in the state of Maine have an SRO. Those people know what they're doing. They're professionals.
And I, I really think that that's in our future anyway. I think that's going to come, that it's going to have, it's going to be.
So.
Yeah, I think it's coming.
And
This is in my conversations with a lot of people around the state.
That's a, that's a fact.
Yeah.
It's not opinion. And follow-up to that is, is when it comes to the budget, I mean, I'm not recommending that we cut anything at expensive anyone. I stick by what I say and I'm ready to do it.
Christine? I just want to say that you can, I mean, there are lots of organizations that promote positions in schools. My school district that has one school psychologist is supposed to have four for the number of, of students that we have. We're probably supposed to have lots more teachers and staff. Again, this is not about an SRO not being in the budget. We can put the SRO in the budget. I love what you said, but I, I just think we really need to be very clear about why we're doing it and, and what it gets us. And I mean, that's a law enforcement organization that's supporting law enforcement.
No, that's not correct. Maine School Safety Center has, I can list you out the people for the record who is on the Maine School Safety Center Board. It's, it's a, it's a government agency that was set up.
More than just law enforcement.
There's psychologists, there's counselors, there's many different types of people. So that's not correct.
And that information that you're sharing, Sean, is available for all
Get all of us to read.
To read. Okay, so
Thanks for that. I appreciate that correction. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'm not sure that we've given you a whole other direction.
So, yes, so can I ask the, the question? Um, so it sounds like what I'm hearing is put the SRO back in. I just
Let's just get kind of a consensus on that. Yay, nay, we don't want it. What, I mean, is that?
Yes.
Put the SRO back in.
What's the increase?
It's a hundred thou.
And it's in terms of percentage. Any tiny close to the previous budget, which was eight and a half.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So like one percent.
And I, and I And then I'm hearing the rest of the cuts that were presented earlier, though those stay in? Or do you want me to add something back in, in terms of conditions? Or, 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 or am I just saying we're putting the SRO back in and like kind of what I've heard was you don't have to do anymore. You're good. But I just want to make sure that I'm hearing correctly that like we're kind of stopping and where we are is where we are and we'll finalize everything. So April fifth, you can see the final numbers.
I think that's almost where we are. I'm just thinking that I would like to see everything on paper.
Yeah.
That we've actually put in, taken out, put in so that we can, you know, I don't want to just sit here not really knowing exactly what we're saying when we're done. What I'm saying is I don't think we need to go any further, but I don't, I'd like to look back at what we've actually already said. So.
I can, I think that out to you tomorrow afternoon.
I agree with Kathy. Um, I think we keep moving forward based on the previous cut and so it's not exactly clear. So, cause we don't like vote on it once we get the draft and then continue. Um, but I also do think that you guys probably had a process and I value that. So I don't know if we should stop your process. Because you did, it sounded like you had another, another meeting. Um, so maybe we're not begging you for cuts, but if there is something there, but you really feel like we don't need, then why would, why would we shut that down?
Well, I think maybe I did, maybe I wasn't clear. I think what I was saying is I don't think the A team, but these other departments haven't had the chance yet to really look at their budgets and talk about what they might not really need. So those, those adult, their transportation, student activities, still a decental office. If those could still go ahead and do that process, so we might bring it down a little bit more. So Christine?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Would we be adding in? Cause one of the things that I think the full board doesn't know is the facilities conversation and those cuts that happened last night. And I don't want to, I mean, we're now possibly increasing it.
Right. We need to.
We, right. Okay.
So we don't have a chance to We need that information.
Yeah.
Before we have a final vote on that. So our final vote is April fifteenth. So
Or twelve, sorry, April twelfth.
The Wednesday of that.
Yes.
The Wednesday.
The Wednesday, not the Friday.
So we still have a little bit of time to, to, but I'd like to look at the whole thing just so I can, that's on my brain marks to, to get understanding what we're talking about here. So are you?
Um, I, I got it. Yes, I'm good now.
Sean, thank you for being so patient.
That's fine. This is the most I spoke in a long time. Budgets, the, the, in the budget that Jay and I have talked with, we'll go back and I'm okay with cutting some things out of my budget. So we will drop a little bit, at least on my end. Like I said, I'm very budget conscientious. I don't ask for what I don't need and to go forward there. The other thing is I like that you guys haven't put a number, I guess, or put a percentage or whatever. Let's try it. See what happens. If the town folks vote it down, then we have to do some, some stuff, but I think we should put it in the back of your minds too. And I think that you guys have talked about it is consolidation coming down the road. Four years from now, I've got some pretty, pretty expensive roofs to repair on elementary schools. And if we're going to do a consolidation, maybe someday, I would just patch these roofs to get by that vice versa like that. So I think you could tell the townsfolk, our budget is this high. You know, and then if they don't want us to have it this high, then we're going to have to consolidate to get it back down. That's
That's good information to have. Thank you.
Yep.
So, given that, I just want to remind folks that the strategic plan committee is forming and we, if you haven't volunteered, we do need four board members on the, maybe you have three. Oh, we have three right now. So you're just dying to do it. And community members and teachers. I don't know where we're at with that, but we need all those people on that strategic plan because that will become a part of that discussion. The whole consolidation and what, where, where do we want to be five years from now? So it's important that we have voices from all of the different stakeholders. So okay, is there any citizen comments on the budget? Oh, Mary did that? What did you say? Oh, Leslie, Leslie. Okay. Sorry. I didn't hear you.
Leslie Marco from Mount Vernon. A question I have is I'll try and do it quickly. When my kids are in daycare, I got a slip and my kid bit somebody. Right? You got bite or your child got bit, you got a slip, you knew what happened. They kept track of that. In elementary school, the administration and the transportation crew are really great. Let me know when my kids aren't behaving on bus twelve. Sean, bus twelve. Okay. I get a slip for that. I appreciate that. Talk to my kids about that. In the middle school, I have had the opportunity to see what a form looks like when my child has made a bad decision in middle school. Where is that information kept? Is there a place where the infraction, no matter how small or how big about student disciplinary action is kept? Even if just in numbers and not in detail. The low infractions, the medium infractions, the high infractions, the suspensions, the expulsions, the how many times cops had to be called to the school? How many times people have had to deal with any number of, of a vast array of problems with the school? Does that data exist somewhere? As a parent of one child that will eventually be three children, where I tell them not even to accept gummies from their friends anymore, except no fruit snacks from anybody, except this one parent, because we'll trust her forever and second parent upon further consideration. But the point is, where's the information? There needs to be transparency. Parents need to understand what's going on in schools. The board needs to understand what's going on in schools. I sit here tonight and it does not look as though the board is on the same page, having same information about what's going on in the schools. As a parent, I'm getting freaked out about what's going on in our schools. I sit here week after week because I care very much about what's going on in our schools. I'm trying to learn. I'm trying to understand, trying to hear other folks in the community that have the similar amount of passion. Trying to talk to students that we've become very involved in because we're active members of our community. Trying to understand where these situations and the problems exist. We did surveys for SROs. Parents were overwhelmingly in support of the SRO. I will say that there's easily a chunk of people who didn't respond to this survey. And those are kids that don't feel like they have a voice, kids that are scared to have a voice, kids that have had their voice taken away. Parents are in a similar spot. Parents that don't have access, parents that couldn't have access to the electronic survey that also didn't provide context, context to the reasons why we're asking, context to the opportunities and the flexibility and the customization that the, if we put the work in to figure out how this could be possible, that we could create it to be what we need it to be. I don't disagree about staff versus SRO. But I do firmly agree with the fact that if we don't do something that's far more significant, that has a far different approach, then what are we going to do to change what the numbers are already rapidly accumulating? And the problems that aren't going away and the severity seems to be escalating. So if we don't have someone in place that will have a very concentrated focus as one of a few lanes that they'll be a part of engaging in, then what, how are we solving that problem? Because it isn't at that point about making sure that kid is also current with his math assessment. Because if, like you said, if he's not here, he's not getting a math assessment. It is about balance, but there has to be something far more significant of a step to take. And the cost that was put into the budget was the cost without grant support. But the number that was in there was taken out because of the number it was without grant support. It has to be looked at different. Are these student disciplinary actions tracked and trended in the schools? I will value what Kathy brought up in the beginning, that these types of citizen comments brought to the board will be addressed before the next board meeting.
Thank you.
So I would suggest, Leslie, that a place to find your answer might be the principal at the school. Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. Let's see, I've lost my agenda. Okay. So, how do we do with our norms tonight, babe?
Let's
Everybody's very good sharing airtime. Uh, and letting everyone speak. Our, our chair helped make sure of that too. We had a lot of conversations looking for solutions and working through things. Everybody listened. A number of us got excited about some things. Uh, but as a board, we listened and, uh, continued with the other things, trying to show respect, not interrupting, agreeing to disagree. We had some disagreements and yet we also had a lot of agreements. And it's good to see us working together. And being responsible, uh, about our tone of voice and body language. We need to, I know I need to be careful of that. I was on other boards and other situations, I get excited sometimes and I uh, apologize for when I react. And I think Sean and I both need to watch out for that sometimes, but it's important for all of us, uh, as a board to keep track of ourselves as best we can, even when it's significant to us. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, David, for the report. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I ask a question. Are we, uh, do the retreat at another time? Or is that tonight?
You could make a motion to do that.
Can we do that another time?
Let's adjourn this meeting first.
I moved it. We adjourn.
All those in favor of adjourning this meeting? Is there a motion for, we were supposed to go into our next meeting now.